Okay, Y Wells checking, I'm gonna try it again, can you hear me now? Okay, thank you. Item two is the approval of the agenda.
I have a motion that's moved by councillor Morgan, seconded by councillor Barker, that council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of January 23rd, 2018 as presented.
All in favor? It's carried. Item three, is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? None declared? Petitions and delegations, it's my pleasure to welcome Mike Sutton regarding the 100th anniversary commemorative statue. Mike, welcome to our council meeting.
Thanks. Yeah, I'm Mike Sutton, I'm the Chair of the TOA, that's Toberne Operating Authority Legacy Subcommittee, and we're formed, it's a collaboration of the TOA, Toberne Operating Authority and the 100th Anniversary Legacy Committee, and what we're proposing to do is to raise funds, first through the federal government's legacy fund and then provincially, and then we have some donors already lined up, and the funds will go towards a life-size bronze statue of a prospector, and it's thought to be the most appropriate thing for Kirkland Lake, obviously, 100th anniversary, 1919, town's, you know, basis is due to prospecting in the area, and so we're gonna erect a life-size bronze statue, the fellow who's doing it, Tyler Fullwell, he's done quite a few of these bronze statues, he's quite the artist, quite the sculptor, and I actually have some of his works here, I thought I'd pass them around to you guys, and... I guess I should have made a PowerPoint so everybody else could see them, but anyway, there's, he's quite an exceptional sculptor, and he's from the Trittowns area originally, and so he's got connections to the area. Now, what we want to do is, we want to erect this at the Toberne site, probably around where the Rock Walk is now, the TOA's going to, you know, do quite a bit of the work, you know, we're gonna put in the base, the cement base, and do the landscaping and all that sort of thing, a lot of volunteer work hours there, and, but what we need from the town is a resolution supporting the endeavor, and, you know, supporting the sculpture's erection at the Toberne, plus we also need a letter, supporting in principle, same thing in principle, the erection of this sculpture, with the Toberne Operating Authority, you know, looking after the maintenance, et cetera, et cetera, of the project. As it stands, we've got, you know, a lot of the, if we get the funding from the government, then, you know, it looks like we will be easily raise the funds to put this sculpture up. The one thing is, in the wording of the letter, I have a, an example here, just sort of suggested wording, but I guess the legacy fund, the federal government's legacy fund, will only support one capital project per community, so we'd need the town to support this capital project over, you know, if there were others. Now, besides the sculpting of a prospector, we're also gonna have a dog with him, because most prospectors do have dogs, and it's not just a certain famous lady prospector from Swastika, there's, there are other prospectors with dogs that go into the bush, so we thought that it would be good for tourism that way, too, little kids love, would love to see a dog there. And, you know, where we're gonna place it, you'll be able to get photos of the headframe in the background, et cetera, et cetera. I'm thinking personally, besides getting support from town, we're gonna get, of course, support from the Northern Prospector Association and that sort of thing, and I think this might actually lead to some other works on the site dedicated to the prospectors, some of the, there's quite a few of us that have, well, there's quite a few famous prospectors in the early days, but there's also quite a few since then from Kirkland Lake, Kirkland Lake even had, you know, down at the Prospectors Association, PDACs have Kirkland Lake Night because Kirkland Lake's famous, not just because of the mines here, but also because of the prospectors that came out of here, so, you know, we probably will put up some other plaques as well, in the future, in honor of some of these prospectors. There's not many of us left, by the way, and I don't know if you know it, but there, you know, even the way prospecting's been done is being changed now, so there's, you know, probably gonna be fewer and fewer going forward, but this would be a nice testimony to the past. Now, yeah, the wording, I guess I should hand that to you.
Yeah, if you can, you know, you could give it to Peter, we'll make sure we get it, and we certainly save you from going around.
Yeah.
But, yeah, thank you, first let me thank you and the Toberne Operating Authority for taking on this initiative here in Kirkland Lake, and you're right, what more, you know, what more...
What better symbol?
What better symbol than, yes, than a prospector, and prospectors with online prospecting and staking, it would be a lifelong symbol towards that, what happened in the past, and certainly, you know, for me, and I'm getting nods from councils, that we certainly support this, and we have the letter, if we need your help some more in wording the letter, we'll certainly make sure you read the letter before we send this off, supporting this whole project.
So I think we do, that the legacy fund requires a resolution though.
Yeah, we have a resolution as well, so we're, if you have nothing more to say, but if you do, please go on, but if you have nothing more to say, we'd be happy to read the resolution and get the vote of council.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I have a motion that's moved by councillor Barker, seconded by councillor Morgan, that council supports in principle the 100th Anniversary Centennial Statue Project to be located on the Toberne property, and that council directs the Director of Economic Development and Tourism to prepare a letter of support for the organizing committee to use as part of their application, and that council approves the town cover the cost of the commemorative plaque from the 2018 tourism budget, and that council approves the reallocation of donated funds from the museum's operating budget toward the project.
All in favor? That's carried unanimous, thank you, and thank you again, Mike. Okay, item five is the acceptance of the minutes and recommendations.
I have a motion that's moved by councillor Morgan, seconded by councillor Barker, that council accepts the minutes of the regular meeting of council held January 9th, 2018.
All in favor? That's carried. Item six, reports of municipal officers and communications, Joanne, you're gonna speak on item 618.
I have a resolution, a request that came in from the National Eating Disorder Information Centre, and they are bringing awareness to eating disorders, so they have asked for council to please declare a week. So the motion is moved by councillor Barker, seconded by councillor Morgan, that council declare February 1st to 7th, 2018 as National Eating Disorder Awareness Week in and for the town of Kirkland Lake.
All in favor? That's carried unanimous, thank you. Item B.
Yeah, the next one is a request from KDCDC, which is the Kirkland District Community Development Corporation, they are applying to NOHFC, they're looking to renew a funding for a youth program, it's called the Head Start in Business, so they've asked for a letter of support from the town of Kirkland Lake, so I have a motion that says, it's moved by councillor Morgan, seconded by councillor Barker, that council approves a letter of support be sent to KDCDC, their Head Start in Business program.
All in favor? It's carried, thank you. Okay, item 62, Hosea, you're gonna come up and speak on item A.
So this is a report from our external auditors, Ross Pope. It's addressing the annual audit for 2017, so it's an annual report which shows us the objectives of the audit that's going to be carried out for 2017. In accordance with the Municipal Act, council hired Ross Pope, they do that on an annual basis, to audit the books of the town of Kirkland Lake. So if you go through this report, you will find the, on page three, these are the objectives or audit deliverables, the results that we expect to get from this audit, and then our auditors are independent, they are not employed by council or management, and item three is where they give us their team to show that they are actual qualified to do this audit, and on page five are responsibilities, responsibilities of management, and also responsibilities of council in as far as this audit is concerned, and then they go on to give us their technical details of how they work, and to try and arrive and give us an audit opinion at the end of their audit. In brief, this is the report.
Hosea, is this report online?
Yes, it is.
We can get it on all our, okay, thank you, so if anybody's interested, they can go in and read it, and, okay?
Yes.
Questions? Okay, we have a resolution.
It's moved by councillor Barker, seconded by councillor Morgan, that council accepts the 2017 Audit Planning Report from Ross Pope LLP.
All in, question, councillor Mino.
Hosea, when you're talking about the non-collectibles or the difficulty in accounts, and you, and here it says select number of taxpayers, how's that process gonna happen?
Normally they do a random selection, it's normally a random sample where they look at, in other words, they list all the outstanding, yeah, all the outstanding taxes, and then from that outstanding list, they do a random sample. Sometimes they do the large amounts, like from a certain amount being the minimum, in order to arrive at what's going to happen with all the rest.
And is that a business as well, or combination?
Yes, it's commercial business as well, all taxpayers in the town of Kirkland Lake.
So that list is compiled?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councillor Kylie.
Yeah, Hosea, that review of the taxes that Norm was talking about, in the past we've seemed to have under budget over the years, so I think that's one particular area that if the auditors are not noting that, they probably will look at it closer. I know we're planning our budget now, and we certainly have put in a higher amount to make it a little more realistic as to what's happening out there. In the past, we haven't, so it's, getting it right the first time or close to it is important.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor? That's carried unanimous. Thank you, Hosea. Okay, item 63, Chief Administrative Officer will speak on updating tax rate policy.
Good evening, this is just a follow-up report to close the loop from what initiated back in October, it is a, it does not contain recommendations, other than I am asking council tonight to listen to the members of the community. The administration has had their public open house back in December, we have had a couple reports to council, sorry, one report to council, one public presentation, after reviewing, I received about 40, 45 letters, I've received a lot of in-person conversations as well, and at this stage, what was best felt is that the administration sit back and allow the members of the community to speak to their elected representatives, because that was one of the things that came out loud and clear at the public meetings and my conversations. So tonight, we are here for the first of allowing the delegates to speak, the intention is to allow the community to digest, councillors and those citizens to digest the information they hear tonight, and to come back at a later date to deliberate and vote on any formal solution. So I am asking no decisions are made tonight, other than allowing people to have their say, so that's pretty evident. The, I have listed five options for council's consideration, the quickly go through, one is the status quo, one is to hire an expert consultant, one is to the special service area rating, which is the municipalities are allowed to do, and some other municipalities have implemented, one is to incrementally implement a 100% phase-in over a certain amount of years, and then, of course, tonight, it's to hear what the community wants and see what they propose, as they did talk to me and at the public open house and in private, that they do have some of their own solutions. So what I'd ask is, I yield the floor to the members of the public, and council allow them to speak and be open to their ideas.
Councillor Morgan.
Thanks, Tony. When we first launched this review, it was my understanding that there was gonna be a significant amount of time for feedback and whatnot, and certainly there has been some opportunity, I'm just wondering, and I have the most...
Sorry, councillor Morgan, could I just ask you to...
Oh, sorry, sorry, I thought I was talking loud. So, I, my understanding was that there was going to be a report by the CAO with recommendations, and then there would be an opportunity for delegations following that, and then finally there would be an opportunity for council to vote on it. The CAO is suggesting February 6th, I would just like to put a motion to put that off by one meeting, to allow additional delegations for people who may not be here this evening, or maybe couldn't get here this evening, or, you know, have a different idea as a result of this evening's discussion, so I'm just wondering if council would entertain that.
Yeah, I don't think any, anything's written in stone, what we don't want to do is rush this process, so certainly if there's, would you read the, we could do the resolution first, and then we can go on from there.
I have a resolution that's moved by councillor Morgan, seconded by councillor Roman, that council allow delegates for the Bernhardt-Mooreset taxation issue another opportunity to delegate at the February 6th meeting, and that the decision be pushed forward to a later meeting date.
All in favor? That's carried, thank you. Councillor Kylie.
Yes, Peter, just...
Sorry, Peter, one question here, on the options and under discussions, I know I voiced this to you a couple of times in the past three or four weeks, one of the considerations I would like to have seen was that rather than us spending $50,000 on a consultant, that we form a committee to sit down with the committee from the residents of Bernhardt-Mooreset and negotiate an equitable deal for both parties. Now, that could be covered, I guess, partially under the special service area ratings, but I do want that, to make that quite clear, that I think that is an option that we should be considering, because $50,000 is a half a percent on the tax levy, and I think we know our community well, and we've worked well with them since 1984, and I think we deserve to give them, and ourselves, a chance to rectify the situation, so I would like that considered as part of the options. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kylie, I have, the concept is not an issue with me, it's, I guess, the mechanics of, obviously engaging the public to one of these solutions, it's just the mechanics, when you mention the word negotiating, as long, as long as we fall within how we can do it within the Municipal Act, right? So it's not like, the Municipal Act does not have like a certain clause that you can negotiate with a particular neighborhood of a community, of what their tax rate's going to be, so the one that is offered, that I, is option three, it's really not a negotiating number, it's a financial exercise, public engagement being number one, obviously the public gets to partake in it, but it's pretty scripted, and I have included it in Appendix A and B, as, so I'm open to the suggestion, and all I would caution is the mechanics of it.
Yeah, just to add to that, Peter, I don't look at this as bonusing, because in fact, we're looking to get some kind of an increase in the tax rate, so it's not bonusing, if anybody's getting bonused, it's the town, so it's not that we're discounting the rate further from what the municipal, Ontario Municipal Board ruled in 1984, so we're just adjusting that rate, so I don't see it, us being out of compliance in that area, that's my opinion.
I'm sorry. Mike Gimmell is the first presenter, Mike, welcome, wherever you are, oh, right there.
We have a PowerPoint presentation, so we're gonna set it up.
That's fine. So, Mike, so I understand you and Mike are together, or...
No, we're using his computer. Three separate...
Oh, I got you, okay, he's up, he's setting it up, I got you.
So you're sitting here, man? No, I sit right here. Can you move it over? Oh yeah, way to go, mate. I need some power. Thank you.
You got that side?
Yes. Sign a little bit of a name while we're setting up. A little bit of pen. Got about four, apparently. Nope. Okay, so... So remember to speak clearly against the microphone. Close, loud, articulate. If you have trouble, you call me. Yep.
Yeah, sure, you know, what we're trying to do is, is keep the presentations as close to 10 minutes as you can, but we're not timing you, and we're certainly not here to rush you as well.
Okay, thank you.
Your floor is yours, Mike.
So, thank you to council for allowing me to speak on this issue, which has created much stress and anxiety to the residents of Bernhardt-Mooreset. I'm gonna provide a little bit of background and history on this subdivision, I've been involved in it since day one, first as a Realtor, back in the early 80s, I sold the lots for the developers, both Phase 1 and Phase 2, I purchased a lot out there, and I built a home, so I've been out there since day one. So in 1982, the town of Kirkland Lake annexed the townships of Bernhardt-Mooreset, at that time, they proposed 100% tax rate phased in over 10 years at 10% per year. Obviously, the residents at that time objected to this tax rate, and they filed an appeal with the Ontario Municipal Board, and also requested the town at that time that they hire a taxation expert, an area taxation expert, from the Ministry of Housing and Municipal Affairs, to conduct a financial analysis of the newly annexed townships. Mr. Terry Bender conducted a study, and he evaluated what services the township received and which ones they did not receive. Based on his study, he recommended a 35% tax rate for Bernhardt-Mooreset. In 1984, the OMB held a public hearing here in Kirkland Lake to hear the concerns of the residents from the townships, and also to hear the rationale of the town for this taxation proposal. The primary reason provided by the town to annex was to control the development of land around the airport. Now, the OMB hearing was held in Kirkland Lake, was presided over by Judge Singer from the OMB, and at that time, he ruled that all lands or irritable property in the geographic townships of Bernhardt-Mooreset shall likewise share in all capital costs of operating the cost of the town to the extent no greater than 35%. The OMB ruling also stated that if the town wanted to raise the tax rates, they must demonstrate that they have increased the services, with appropriate evidence to justify raising the tax rates. Since 1982, the town has not provided any additional services to justify any increase in the tax rates for those townships. In 1982, we had a population of 11,885, we're down to 7,951. When a town grows, the population increases, you increase services, we're down 33%. Road services are paid for on a user fee basis by the residents, except for Airport Road, which up till about a year and a half ago, received an upgrade in chip and tire resurfacing, and this benefits all of KL taxpayers, people go out there picking blueberries, cut firewood, go fishing, some people even bring their garbage out there to dump on our side roads. This was initiated by DSAB for the ambulance service. Bernhardt-Mooreset have contributed millions of dollars in taxes since annexation, and we have received nothing in the hard services, such as roads, sewers, water, and other capital expenditures, as well as contributing to other soft services. Now, the highlights and background for the OMB ruling, M830053, the town of Kirkland Lake would be the urban service area, not the townships of Bernhardt-Mooreset, that the township's 35% tax contribution go toward all operating and capital projects currently overseen by the town. It was clear that such services as policing, fire protection, road maintenance, and construction, provisions of water, sewage disposal, garbage collection, et cetera, were... provisions of water, sewage disposal, garbage collection, et cetera, were sadly deficient or non-existent as compared to the urban service area. No one from the municipality gave evidence to indicate the present state of municipal services in the annexed areas, or what plans, if any, existed for future improvements of existing services, or provisions of services now absent from these annexed areas. It was ruled by the OMB that should the town seek to increase taxation rates beyond the 35%, that they present appropriate evidence that service levels have improved, or have been added to this township greater than those that existed in 1984. By simply pointing to a list of all things the town spends money on and saying, "Do you have access to all these services?", is not sufficient evidence that any service levels have actually improved or been added. It requires a detailed breakdown. Now, I strongly believe that if someone is going to make a decision on an important matter, they should have all the facts. There is some important information that's been missing in the reports from the staff, and I'm going to go over some of this right now. And to talk about assessments. All we ever hear is they only pay 35%. You talk to different people in town, you get all sorts of figures. What does 35% mean in dollar values? So I'm going to start with property values in Kirkland Lake. This is the average residential, single-family resident price for Kirkland Lake, 2012 to 2016, which was the previous assessment window for that four-year period. In 2012 was $125,000. That was the last year KL Gold gave their employees $20,000 to buy homes. Then we dropped the next two years. We had an uptick back in 2015, not sure why. I think it might be because Alamos went on a hiring spree. Then it dropped again in 2016. So the five-year average was $115,394 in Kirkland Lake. So we've got a chart showing that. So that's what your market's done in the last, in that five-year period. Meanwhile, out in Bernhardt, what I've done is I've collected information from just my area. I don't have access to people in Nettie Lake, so I've concentrated on Harvey Drive, Bernhardt Drive, and Airport Drive. There's 40 residences out there. So in that 2013-2017 period, we had five sales from a low of $350 to a high of $445, the average being $394.4. That's 229% higher than the average sale price in Kirkland Lake. So in 2016, the average assessment for Bernhardt, Goodfish Lake area, was $324,000, which was 17.8% below the average sale price of the homes out there. MPAC has caught up to this. We are now going by 2020 up to $458,287. That's for those 33 homes that I had the information for. We are going to be 16% higher than the average sale price. Our scheduled assessment increase is $134,200, or 41.4% per resident out there. That $134,000, just our increase alone is more than the average sale price in Kirkland Lake. This trend is consistent with house values throughout Bernhardt, Goodfish Lake, and Moressett, which is Nettie Lake. So there's a graph showing that versus Kirkland. So, they only pay 35%. So I'm going to show you in dollars what 35% is. In 2017, the average municipal tax per household in Kirkland Lake was $2,837. Bernhardt-Moressett, at 35%, was $2,722. So we were about $115 less. With our increased assessment moving forward, Kirkland Lake's going to be $3,0409. We will be, at the current rate, with no change, $3,849. We're going to be $440 more. You go to 100%, you triple that. And there's the graph showing where we're going with our taxes out there, with no services. So the average tax rates in Bernhardt-Moressett are obviously much higher, and this is due to the higher average assessment values. So we're heading for a 41% increase. Any increase in the 35% tax rate will significantly amplify this 41% increase in 2020 and beyond. Because of our higher assessment, these increases will affect us more than the urban centre taxpayer. Mr Augustus has also projected, at the first information meeting, a possible 18% taxation increase in 2018 for this year because of shortfalls. In addition to this, any increase in subsequent years to the tax rate will drive our taxes even higher. Any increase is unjustified with no increase in level of service. $458,000 is the average for those 33 homes. 25% of the homes are above the average, from $489 to over $800,000. 50% are assessed from $350 to $450. 25% are assessed under $350, the lowest being $250, which is still double what the average sale price in Kirkland Lake is. So, how do we compare this to outlying areas? So, 2016, 2017, I have got several sales that took place on Canogami, Crystal Lake, ranging in price from $245 to $629,000. On the right are the taxes that those people pay. Average sale price was $418,000 and change. Their average tax is $1,246. That's what you're competing against for growth. If we get a tax increase out there, you'll never see another house built out there. So, many of these residents in these outlying areas, they come to town every day, and they have access to all our municipal services: airport, social family services, library, policing, cemetery, recreation, ambulance, everywhere. All roads, sidewalks, parking lots, parking, crosswashes, traffic lights, all located in tech township. We are paying our fair share. We feel we're paying our fair share. An increase in the 35% rate will already be, will be the highest taxpayers in Kirkland Lake. It will be crippling when combined with the 41% increased assessment values. These properties will become less desirable, will be harder to sell. Trust me, I was in real estate for 37 years. Reduced the market value versus the outlying areas, Canogami, Sess, and Crystal. This will force some residents to sell their homes. We have people that are retired on fixed incomes. Imagine your taxes tripling to the number I just mentioned. New young families with high mortgages. You buy a home, you've got a mortgage, then all of a sudden your taxes go through the roof, you can't afford to keep your home, you're forced to sell it. That's the end of my presentation. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
And the next presenter is Alexander Thompson. Thank you for coming, Alexander, and the only thing I would ask, I neglected to ask, Mike, but just state your name and your address, please.
My name is Alex Thompson, and my address is 96 Bernhardt Drive, and I'm here tonight as a concerned taxpaying resident of Moressett Township.
Thank you.
So, I would like to start my presentation by reading a quote made by the town's CAO, Mr Peter Augustus, that appeared in the September 24th edition of Northern News. You'll also notice that I've emphasized some key words here that will be recurring points. "A lot has changed in the municipal environment since 1984, including the 1990s provincial downloading of land ambulance, policing, long-term care, social services, public health, the 2000s federal downloading of airports, and the town's 2017 decision to move all wastewater costs off of the property tax levy." My initial reaction to this was that the town seems to have valid reasons for reopening this taxation issue after 34 years, because all of those sound like very expensive costs to be downloaded onto our municipality. So after reading this, I assumed that these costs were download, these were downloaded costs, and that the additional expenses that the municipality incurred after the annexation and subsequent OMB ruling. After doing my own research and spoke with many longtime residents of Kirkland Lake, I discovered this was not exactly the case. As Mike previously mentioned, the special municipal taxation rate of 35% was set in 1984 by the Ontario Municipal Board as a requisite for the town's recent annexation of the townships. The ruling went on to state that the taxes collected by the town would be used to pay for the operating and capital costs of the following services, which comprised virtually all of the town's cost centres at the time, except for water and sanitation. It is also worth noting that since the introduction of the OMB ruling, the town did not allocate the tax money from Bernhardt-Moressett to these specific cost centres, and instead put it towards the funding of all services and programs, including water distribution and sewer. I would now like to address the specific cost centres that were allegedly downloaded onto the municipality by the provincial and federal governments, and relate it back to the OMB ruling. Policing. At the time of the ruling, and up until the mid 90s, the town had its own municipal police force. The transition to the Ontario Provincial Police was actually chosen by the town as a cost-saving measure due to the high cost of maintaining its own municipal force. This was not downloaded. Long-term care. The original OMB ruling included the debt for the cost of the building of the first tech pioneer residents. Today, we are paying the loan and interest on the new TPR building, while the vast majority of the millions of dollars that it costs to operate the facility are still covered by provincial grant money. In other words, it is status quo on long-term care. The airport. The initial cost to build the airport was mostly covered by provincial and federal funding in the 1970s, however, the cost to operate and maintain the airport was always a municipal expense. In 2008, the federal government introduced the safety management system, which put additional cost burdens on the municipalities for keeping a certified airport. We have recently learned that the town's total operating costs last year were $226,000 and posted a net deficit of $73,000. Public health. The town was already paying for the Tamiskaming Health Unit and several other public health programmes at the time that the OMB ruling was made. Therefore, this was not downloaded onto Kirkland Lake. Social services. The town had its own welfare system before switching to DSAB. Remember that regional service agencies were introduced as a cost-saving measure by the provincial government in the late 90s to spread the cost burden. It is also worth noting that social housing was also being subsidized by the town prior to the 1990s. This service was also not downloaded. Ambulance services were downloaded onto the town. MPAC, these were also downloaded onto the town. So out of the seven items that were stated to have been downloaded onto the municipality, only two, ambulance and MPAC, were obviously downloaded, while the airport was only partially downloaded. A lot has changed. So what has really changed? The CAO has claimed that there's been a lot of change to the services that the town of Kirkland Lake has provided since 1984. The purpose of the following data is to illustrate that very little has changed. So this slide is showing two tables. On the left-hand side is the town's 2017 operating budget, with all the cost centres on the left, the budgeted expenditures in the middle, and the percentage of the total budget for each cost centre. The chart on the right-hand side is showing the same figures except with removal of sanitation and waterworks. So you'll notice that the percentage of the total budget has upticked slightly because of the removal of that. So the financial, the left-hand, yeah. So I've highlighted, also highlighted the cost centres that were allegedly downloaded for illustrative purposes. You'll see in the right-hand table that the percentage of the town's budget for costs that were actually downloaded is almost insignificant. MPAC at 0.7%, ambulance at 4.3%, and the airport to some degree at around 1.5%. And that is based on net, or on total operating costs, not net operating costs. So there's been very little change actually overall to the costs that have been downloaded onto the municipality. Now I'd like to talk about improvements and additions since 1984 to Bernhardt-Moressett, as this was a clause made in the original OMB ruling. We still have the same substandard roads. The roads that I live on, I live on Bernhardt Drive. In some areas, the roads are about 12 feet wide, and traffic is, traffic driving through there is very hazardous. We have no streetlights or sidewalks. We have no parks, beautification, or recreational investment in our neighbourhoods. There's been no utility investments or incentives, where some municipalities will partially fund capital projects for residents, such as well-drilling to get off lake water and things like that. Minimal to nonexistent fire protection. Out of all the house fires that have happened in Bernhardt-Moressett Township, they have all resulted in the complete destruction of the property because of the lack of fire protection. Six months of the year, the lakes are frozen, and the town does not own a tanker truck to fight a fire out there, unless they drill through the ice and the pumper truck can actually reach the shore. Simply put, hard services are the same as they were in 1984. Virtually all of the assessed value within the township stems from individual property owners spending their own money, developing their own properties, and maintaining their own roads. Residents and property owners of Bernhardt and Moressett Township have contributed millions of dollars towards town projects, and have yet to see any kind of return in their neighbourhoods. So, it's all, central to this discussion is also the perception of fairness, and what this means to residents of Kirkland Lake. We are also residents of Kirkland Lake, and this is the concluding statement from the OMB ruling. "It is suggested that if, at a later date, the town should see fit to apply to the OMB to increase the levy, that the town establish by appropriate evidence the extent to which the services available to the townships of Bernhardt and Moressett have improved over their condition in 1984, and the extent, if any, of new services which have been provided to these areas since that time. We have asked for a detailed breakdown for the appropriate evidence where the town can demonstrate improved or added services. The 97% of services calculation in the CAO's presentation on October 17th simply falls short of that requirement. The additional downloaded services argument is demonstrably weak, as services are virtually unchanged, slightly unchanged, or slightly changed. So, how could the town think they are acting in good faith by ignoring the recommendations of an agreement signed by a judge, simply because there was a legal out to do so? The town simply cannot afford to update our level of services to warrant any tax increases. There are many millions of dollars that would have to be spent to bring us up to anywhere near 100% taxation. This is why the OMB ruling required evidence in the name of fairness." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mike Panagopka, welcome.
My name is Mike Panagopka, and I'm from 86 Bernhardt Drive. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present. This is our first opportunity to present to mayor and council, and so thank you for your time. Before I begin, I would like to formally request that we are permitted to present to mayor and council after any recommendations are made. This would be because we don't know what the recommendation is, and we don't know what to say right now. So we'd appreciate that consideration. Thank you very much. I'm going to review several economic impact... I'm going to review several economic impact topics, starting with my own family. I sent a letter to the mayor and council in the fall, which contained many of these points. My family and I spent several years debating whether we should buy the family cottage on Round Lake or add an addition to the house on Goodfish Lake. I actually took the time to book a meeting with MPAC in two thousand fourteen to get an estimate of what our taxes would be if we proceeded with the addition of choice. At the time, we were proposed that the estimate would come around sixty-five-hundred dollars once complete. We proceeded with that. We were okay with that. This is without the recent increase in assessment values, which rounded down would bring us to over nine-thousand dollars in a year if there was no change to the current thirty-five-percent level. In the last few years, we have also prepared an area to build a large garage. We have also decided not to tear down part of our original house, and also approached the town in the fall, in the spring actually, to purchase a piece of land across the road to develop a cross-country ski trail and walking trail. The point of all of this is that, had we known a change to the judge rule to OMB agreement was possible, we would have significantly changed our plans. This is why we feel it is crucial to have a fair, honorable, and reliable tax system in place. This is the best way to drive growth and prevent fear from scaring development away. Had we known a tax change to this agreement was possible, we would have added a smaller addition, or bought the cottage on Round Lake outside of Kirkland Lake. Any increases to taxes will cause us to indefinitely postpone our garage or cancel it altogether. We will likely go back to Plan A, which is tear down part of our house to reduce our footprint and reduce our tax exposure, and we will definitely not be able to approach the idea of creating a ski and walking trail in the area. The amazing thing to me is that this is just our family situation. We know of half a dozen projects right now on hold because they are scared as to what the outcome will be if an unfavorable tax increase occurs. How many projects would be canceled, reduced, or find themselves moving outside the KL boundary? And is this the kind of legacy we want to leave? The following is a general example of a house worth four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars with a sudden increase of four-thousand dollars per year. The purpose of this is to serve as an example only. In this example, it would be fairly easy to have the market value of a house drop by about a hundred-thousand dollars for two main reasons. Number one is if an equivalent house can be found outside of Kirkland Lake with four-thousand dollars less in taxes, that buyer would much more be inclined to purchase the house outside because of the tax differential. Number two reason is it takes approximately one-hundred-thousand dollars to fund four-thousand a year indefinitely, and this is using a worldwide-accepted four-percent achievable There are many potential issues with mortgages. Large mortgages issued in the last few years are fragile to a drop in market value due to any unfavorable increase in taxes. This is because they were issued at rates that will likely never be seen again due to the fact that rates are absolutely trending higher, with a recent three-quarter percent rise just in the last eight months. The government also has made it very clear they're going to continue to raise interest rates. The government has also made changes to many rules around mortgages to try to stabilize the market. Unfortunately, the rules are being made across the board and don't account for situations like small towns like ours. An example of one such rule change is the January first implemented rule that requires the mortgage to pass a test based on interest rates being higher by two percent than they are now. Any unfavorable tax increase will place further pressure on market values, mortgages, rates paid, and their transferability. This will cause many to be stuck with the automatic renewals that almost always have higher interest rates attached because they simply cannot negotiate, adding further expense pressure to these families. Many challenges exist with retirees as well. We can't blame any of these retirees in our area for budgeting on what they thought was a reliable agreement. After all, it's been in place for several decades. Most retirees are on fixed pensions and are already experiencing financial stress to meet their needs. It's wonderful that Canadians on average are living much longer, but this has caused more pressure on existing retirement plans. We have already heard from many retirees that are struggling to meet the ever-increasing heating, hydro, food costs, and the list goes on. I was speaking to one of my neighbors, one of my retired neighbors, just a couple of days ago, and he actually worked it out that forty percent of his pension income, his net pension income, would be required to pay the taxes if there was an extreme change. The end result would be that many retirees would be forced to make tough choices and sell their homes. This would add further pressure to market values. Professionals in our area have also grown increasingly frustrated and discouraged by the cost of living here, especially the taxes. We simply cannot afford to lose our professionals when we actually need to attract more. We risk losing and attracting less of these key contributors, which will lead to a cascading effect. An example of a cascading effect is when a patient moves away to access healthcare they can't get here. We just can't afford to do that. Bernhardt and Morissette residents have no access to natural gas. They pay additional delivery charges for hydro and pretty much everything else. In addition, there was many that wisely installed heat pump systems decades ago but are being punished today by increasing hydro costs, including the recent changes with peak-off, peak pricing. A heat pump can't turn off during the day because it's peak pricing. It has to keep going. And that's why you end up with some people hitting bills in excess of a thousand dollars in a single month. And that's happening because they don't have access to gas. We have to do other things. Then we're putting in other heating systems to try to compensate for that, which is more money, more effort. I'm spending a month in my summer cutting firewood, and that's just to keep costs under control. There are countless other examples of costs that occur at a much higher level as a result of being where we are. The bottom line is, we chose to be here and budgeted every decision around these obstacles, including our tax rate, which was a judge-imposed OMB ruling, and that is why we had confidence in it. There are some positive potentials. What if there was no change? We would see continued growth in our area, which, by the way, I'm sure you'd agree, is probably the strongest growth area in the town of Kirkland Lake. The town would receive an increased revenue already from the already occurring forty-one percent in increased assessment values. There is always the potential to develop commercial use. Why not study what led the growth in our area and try to replicate its growth? And most importantly, to honor the OMB ruling and work to reduce taxes in Kirkland Lake and get our entire town growing. At the last meeting, there was mention of a lot of change in Bernhardt and Morissette. I'll tell you right now that this growth has occurred largely in part because of the fair and reasonable tax rate. Had there been an unfavorable tax increase before, this growth would have stopped, and the count of homes here today would have been greatly diminished. Why would we want to stop this growth? In summary, any tax increase to our tax rate would be significantly amplified by the forty-one percent that has already been phased in within the next couple of years. I should mention that if you do a calculator on our thirty-five percent, add the forty-one percent, and then any thoughts of any increases, it's pretty scary numbers. I was getting into twenty, twenty-five thousand on my house, and I'm sure you'd agree, for somebody living on a twelve-foot-wide dirt road that doesn't have gravel and has logs stuck in it, I'd rather just not do anything. A tax increase would also significantly slow down or stop growth in Bernhardt and Morissette to the detriment of the town overall. As an overall conclusion, I'd like to review the following. Rising assessment values will already provide the town of Kirkland Lake with guaranteed increase in tax revenues at an already fair tax rate. There is no need to do anything. A tax increase will stop planned projects and will not benefit the average Kirkland Lake taxpayer to any extent. As shared previously, a tax increase would cause market values to drop, reduce revenues to the town of Kirkland Lake due to reducing reassessment values. The current fair tax rates would continue to attract growth in the area. We encourage this mayor and council to support the existing stable and fair tax rate and will continue to create, that will continue to create, development to the benefit of the town overall. We remain confident that a favorable outcome can be reached, but respectfully advise that we have also explored other options available to us. As far as we are concerned, and we could debate the options available all day, our three key options are to do nothing, hire an independent consultant, and by the way, we know of a city of seven-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand that they hired the two best consultants in the country and it was twenty-five thousand, meaning we should be able to do it under fifteen thousand with one good person. And the other option, number three, is to de-annex. We are respectfully requesting that you continue to support a fair tax rate and let our area remain as an example to grow from. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks for having me.
The next speaker is Dr. Antonio Visbal.
Hello, my name is Antonio Visbal. I live in sixty-three Pine Tree Road in Nettie Lake. Mr. Mayor and council members, I thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight, to ask you to vote against the changes to the municipal act that will lead to an increase in the current tax rate to our properties in Morissette and Bernard Township. With all due respect, despite the proposed increase in taxes to our community, the town of Kirkland Lake has not and will not have the financial capability to provide service equivalent to a hundred-percent tax rate, such as public lighting, fire service, and road standards. Additionally, it will not change our current expenses related to our properties, including maintaining water supply, septic tank, coals, and gas supplies. As you know, with the current meal rate in Kirkland Lake, the actual dollar value for our property taxes at thirty-five percent is already high. Currently, most property owners living full-time in these communities are paying average four-thousand dollars a year and some more than that. The reality is that most of us are middle-class professionals and will not be able to afford continuing living in our communities if there is an increase to our taxes. Our livelihood equity to our homes and plans for savings for retirement are a risk. There is also a financial, a significant number of retired professionals in our neighborhood who have served our community for many years and have planned their life based on the current tax rates and will not be able to afford the new rates. One of our main attractions to our community for recruitment of professionals is the possibility of living in Northern Lake communities at affordable rates. If this benefit is taken away, it will be very difficult for the town of Kirkland Lake to attract and retain professionals. In particular, regarding medical professionals, three of the now currently practicing physicians live in our neighborhood, including the only anesthetist and general surgeon in the community. There is also a retired general surgeon who provides service to the town for over forty-five years. Some of you have been part of the different recruitment committees in our town and have witnessed how difficult it has been to attract professionals and maintain our physician base. I would like to remark that modifying the current task structure will penalize the physicians who have been in our community for more than ten years and are currently the longest-serving medical professionals in Kirkland Lake. Consider that the proposed task changes will penalize the retired nurses and physicians who were present at the delivers of more of your daughters and sons and took care of you and your family members when needed. Consider that you will penalize the teachers of your kids and your grandkids and many other professionals such as police officers, social workers, artists, dentists, entrepreneurs, and small business owners that have been providing service to our community, and some of them continue to work at honoring in the many service committees of the town to make our life better. Please consider the human factor involved in your decision. When you are casting your vote, I thank you for the attention to my request.
The next speaker up is Brian and Carrie Bertincello. Welcome.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Carrie Bertincello, and I live at fifty-two Bernhardt Drive. And just echoing Dr. Visbal's comments about the human aspect, I'm just here to talk kind of about our position and about the meeting that we had back in November. So my husband moved here in two thousand one, and I moved here in two thousand two. We both signed up to do a six-year duration posting with the Ontario Provincial Police. We wanted to do our six years and then move back to where our families are from, which is through Saint Maria in Leamington. Through that time, I've moved from a frontline constable, and now I'm the detective sergeant in the detachment here in Kirkland Lake, and my husband is also on the job with the OPP in a specialty unit. We really have come to love this community. We have a nine-year-old son who's involved in all the activities that he can be involved in, and my husband and I are very active volunteers. My husband is part of the Minor Hockey Association. He's a hockey coach with Minor Hockey, as well as a volunteer coach with the junior team here in town. And I volunteer with Rotary in a lot of different ways. We have no family here, but we've set down roots and we've really come to love it. We also currently pay about four-thousand dollars in taxes each year, and a proposed increase to a hundred dollars would mean that we would pay about twelve-thousand dollars annually. We're one of the smaller homes on our lake, so our neighbors would be paying much, much more, up to twenty-thousand dollars, as previously been discussed. So most of you weren't there at the meeting on November fourteenth, but there was lots of discussion. Some of the information presented seemed to pit the taxpayers against each other, Bernhardt and Morissette versus Tech Townships. That was very evident to me, and this is not a solution. We need to come together as a community and not introduce divisions and create dissension between taxpayers. The goal should be for Kirkland Lake to be a community that people want to come to, and I'm not sure that increasing taxes for anyone will solve the financial problems that this town is facing. It was very clear at the meeting that the suggestion of increasing the taxes had put them under significant stress about their futures. Even my nine-year-old knows that we're here tonight, and he's like, "Mom, please tell me what happens." We try not to talk to him about it, but that's what we're facing in our homes. So in regards to the services, CAO brought up the point that homeowners have access to all the services just as everyone else does in town. I thought there were some very good presentations tonight. The only one that I can speak on is the court security and prisoner transportation is one of the services, and I have an article here from the Northern Daily News in March of last year where these court services were moving away from the town budget and absorbed by the OPP, saving the town three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. I don't know about other items included on that list, but I think that this service was listed in error. In the services, the homes in Bernhardt and Morissette were compared to three homes in Harvey Kirkland, as well as a few that are on Airport Road. The rest of the homes, other than those three, fall into La Belle Township, and somebody brought up from the crowd that if there is a disparity because they don't receive the services either, perhaps a solution would be to bring those small amount of affected homes in line with the homeowners in Bernhardt and Morissette, rather than adjusting the ninety homes in Morissette to be the same as the small amount that were identified. There was also discussion about garbage collection. The CAO seemed to indicate that if the town would provide garbage collection and road maintenance to the residents in this affected area, that the services would be on par with residents who live in the town. Several homeowners indicated that garbage pickup was not a service they would want due to the bears and other wildlife in the area. Further, our roads are not up to standard, and the garbage trucks wouldn't be suitable, they wouldn't be suitable for the garbage trucks to travel on. Speaking of road standards, in the meeting, the CAO assured the residents that if the tax rate was tax rate was raised to 100%, that all of our roads would be brought up to the same standards as the rest of the town. I'm not sure how many of you have traveled on our roads these days, but there are logs coming up in the middle of the road. They're narrow, and there's gravel, fill, culverts, all sorts of maintenance. I can only imagine the costs that would be associated for those upgrades that were assured to us would be completed, and I really doubt that the proposed tax increases would cover even a small portion of the tens of millions it would cost to complete these upgrades. It was previously discussed, but hookups, that seemed to be left out of the services that, you know, were mentioned. One service is the access to water and sewage. Our home draws water from the lake, and just as an example, we have a purification system in our basement. Our water line itself costs $5,000, and since we moved there in 2004, it's failed three times. Our filtration system costs $7,000 to install, and there's a monthly and annual fee to have it maintained. These are just some of the extra costs affiliated to living in Bernhardt-Morissette that were left out of that presentation. At the meeting on November 14th, Dr. Visbal spoke very eloquently to the group about the human side of this decision and spoke about attracting professionals to our community. One point that was discussed is if there was equity in tax rates, would the tax rates go down for the people in Tech Township if the tax rates went up for the people in Bernhardt-Morissette? This was confirmed that this could be a possibility, which would mean no increased revenue to the town of Kirkland Lake. I did some real rough math on this. Town residents would see a reduction of approximately $10 a month in their taxes if our small group of residents in Bernhardt-Morissette were forced up to the 100% mark, which would be about $1,000 a month increase for that small cohort of people. Families in my neighborhood have based their mortgages and finances on the tax rate they've been paying. A $1,000 a month increase would devastate most of these families financially. Personally, for my family, we've stayed in Kirkland Lake far beyond our obligation with the OPP because we love the town and the people. We would both be far more likely to develop professionally if we moved closer to our families, but we like it here and we've become active members of the community. With an increase to $12,000 a year in taxes, we would have no choice but to move. We would not look to move into the town, and instead we would be moving out of the area completely, and we've already started to consider these options. We are lucky with the OPP because since we've signed up with a duration posting, they will take over our home and they will sell it for us. So financially, we would have that equity in our home available to us to relocate. The OPP would fill my chair and my husband's chair with someone else who's looking like we did to do a five-year duration here. Almost two years ago, one of my colleagues left Kirkland Lake after working here for 15 years. Part of that decision was because of the taxes here. That house is still sitting empty for sale. It may not be as easy to fill the chairs of some of the professionals that live in my neighborhood like Dr. Visbal. To say that selling these homes with a huge tax bill would be challenging is an understatement. I can't imagine that they would encourage other young professionals to come to Kirkland Lake. You will have families walking away from their homes, ruining them financially. Clearly, our town is in trouble financially, but I'm not sure this is a solution. The total financial income from the families in Bernhardt-Morissette would be a drop in the bucket and would result in ruining many of these families' financial future. The homes in Bernhardt-Morissette would sit vacant as their resale value would drop with an annual tax bill that would scare off potential buyers. I don't think a tax increase to anyone, Tech, Bernhardt, or Morissette is the solution as families are already moving out to the outlying communities because of the taxes. Increases will just result in more vacant homes on the market. We need to seek out new and innovative solutions to move Kirkland Lake in the right direction. There were some suggestions made at the November 14th meeting about tapping into taxes that are paid to the province by families in the outlying areas without increasing their taxes. I'm sure there are other solutions that are feasible. You guys are the elected officials tasked with making these decisions, and I hope that the decisions will let our little town get through these tough times. Thank you very much.
Next, the presenter is Mr. Albert Bro. Albert, are you, oh, there's one right there. Let's see you. Hiding in the weeds, sir. Camouflage.
I'm just a small guy.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Albert Bro, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak my mind. You've had a good presentation tonight. I didn't come as prepared as they are. I'm going to be more businesslike. If you increase the taxes, what are you helping? I've always said that the town is in trouble. There's no two ways about it, but it's not by increasing the taxes that you're going to solve the problem. I've overseen a few things that went on at the last meeting, for an example. The town spent $85,000 on a pump, and one of the counselors asked the engineer, "What's the lifestyle of, the length of the life of that pump?" He says, "Twenty-five, thirty-five, forty-five years, something like that." And then one of the counselors asked, "Well, how long, how old is that pump now?" He says, "It's 25 years." Why would you need another pump? It's still good for 10 years, as average, as pretty engineer. But still, council allowed $85,000 on the budget. So that's tax money that you could use somewhere else. And then we had the same thing with the filtering system for the water, the brown water. We had an option of 50,000 or 250,000 or 200. What was the figure? 200? Well, there was recommended, you have to do something, so let's do the 50. But no, council say, "Let's go for 200." It wasn't needed. So you have to cut your expenses. You don't raise taxes. I've been in business for a long time. I've went through ups and downs, and if I were to raise my price, customer would have went somewhere else. No, I've cut my expenses again tonight. Peter wanted to spend $50,000. It's not needed. Mr. Calley said, "Let's try something else. We can work together." Well, this is what we have to do now, is work together. You cannot up the taxes because, number one, Kirkland Lake is in trouble financially, and where are you going to get the money to fix those roads if you don't have money? How can you raise the taxes on Bernhardt and Morissette if you can't fix the roads? Because the first or second snowstorm we had, the snowfall, the plow got stuck in the road in front of my place at roughly 6:00 in the morning. They had to get a tractor from the town to come and pull them out. That's how bad the road is. And when I first moved there, I had to level off about five loads of granule A so I can get into my place. Like, you don't realize, I don't know if this study was made, what is it going to cost to bring that road up to par? And I don't think that Kirkland Lake, out of Morissette and Bernhardt, realizes that they're going to have to pay to repair those roads to bring it up to standard. Because where are you going to get the money? Not from our taxes you're going to raise, because you've got to fix the road first before you can raise our taxes. So Kirkland Lake should be full here tonight to say, "Hey, we don't want them, their taxes to go up if they're good businesspeople." But the problem is, you have to cut expenses, not raise taxes. Kirkland Lake is in a good position right now to grow. We've got FedEx coming in. The mine had a beautiful announcement, and you've got other businesses that are willing to come to Kirkland Lake. Let's not kill the people that wants to build here. This is the problem. You cannot raise taxes, not even in town. Morissette, you've had a good presentation of why it shouldn't go up. We're already high. If you raise the taxes to my house, it's going to be over $24,000. There's not one house in Kirkland Lake that deserves that. I don't think so. So I hope you guys will make the right decision because it's do or die, and I thank you very
Thank you. Next presenter is Adam Wirth. Adam? Yeah, here we go. Welcome.
First off, as already mentioned, my name is Adam Wirth. I currently live at 22 Harvey Drive. I would like to thank council for being willing to listen to our concerns. I would also like to start by acknowledging that Mr. Augustus and current and future town councils have a difficult job with some very difficult decisions upcoming based on our current fiscal situation. These decisions must be equitable to all of its residents and based on what is best for the town, but must also take long-term effects into consideration and lead our town towards a path of targeted and desirable outcomes. I also believe that the handling of the taxation of Bernhardt-Morissette has not been reported effectively in the media, driving a wedge between the residents of the town in an effort to gain leverage based on public sentiment to enact 100% taxation of these townships while clouding the relevant information that should be made clear to the residents. In multiple discussions my wife and I have had recently with residents of the town who believe the residents of Goodfish and Nettie Lake should pay 100% taxes, few are aware of the actual taxes that residents of these townships pay. Some don't think residents of Bernhardt-Morissette currently pay any taxes. Others are shocked to hear tax bills already approaching $4,000 to $5,000, which are, in a lot of cases, more than their own tax bills and already place us in the top 50% of taxpayers in the town, but with less services. Mr. Augustus' report to council, he presents four talking points for council's consideration that I think need to be further explored. He has previously stated that we receive 97% of services by expense but only pay 35% tax rate. Most of these costs are related to the soft services that the town provides: police, fire, ambulance, and other D-SAB-related services, maintenance of town buildings, infrastructure funding, capital projects, and staffing. I think it must be noted that without hydrant water infrastructure, fire protection services are greatly hindered and causes us to pay higher insurance premiums. I understand that all of these costs need to be paid by all taxpayers, but we are completely lacking in the day-to-day hard services that in-town residents are provided: road infrastructure and maintenance, garbage and recycling, and most importantly, access to water infrastructure. I do think it is important to note that the maintenance of Airport Road is in fact top-notch, and I consider it the best in town. This also includes the further road maintenance that we as residents of Bernhardt-Morissette pay for as a contract to the town. However, the question that I repeatedly ask myself is, if I were a resident of King Kirkland or Canogamy, or if we deannexed from the town, would I notice any difference in services to my household? With the exception of paying for a library card for my kids and having to pay a little more for swimming lessons and other town memberships, the answer is a resounding no. As a member of an unorganized township paying substantially less taxes, I would still have OPP response, fire protection from a volunteer fire department, and if I called for an ambulance, it would still respond. Two, the conveniently timed talking point that I've already mentioned is the access to water infrastructure, since it was very recently removed from the general tax levy. The problem with the assertion that it shouldn't be considered when determining the special tax rate for Bernhardt-Morissette is that all of the current water infrastructure within the town has been paid for by using or leveraging the general tax levy in the past, which the residents of Bernhardt-Morissette have paid into since 1984 without seeing any in-ground infrastructure themselves. The lack of access to this infrastructure is still very much relevant in considering access to services that the town provides. Three, Mr. Augustus makes reference to the increased downloading of cost to the town since the original annexation in 1984. He also points out that the number of seasonal dwellings versus year-round residence has increased substantially. Could be interpreted that this somehow places an additional burden to the town to service these issues, or these areas. I would argue that this shift has actually been a huge benefit to the town because what he fails to rationalize is that the impact assessment value of those permanent dwellings has also increased enormously, meaning that the town now generates a substantially higher revenue from the taxation of Bernhardt-Morissette and its increasing number of dwellings than it did in 1984 without any change to the hard services that it provides to the area. I would argue that this tax increase, that this increase in tax revenue is more than enough, far more than to compensate for the increase in downloaded expenses to the town, and that a 35% tax rate is still an appropriate measure of the services we are being provided. Four, as part of the 100% rate option, Mr. Augustus had proposed to offer full hard services to Bernhardt-Morissette, including bringing roads up to town standard. There is currently only a small portion of roads in Bernhardt-Morissette, Harvey Drive and a small part of Bernhardt Drive that are currently up to town standard. What is the cost projection to all the taxpayers of Kirkland Lake in bringing the remaining roads up to town standards? What is the proposed timeline for how this is to happen? Are more capital projects what the town needs right now? Is the increased revenue expected from 100% taxation of Bernhardt-Morissette enough to cover that cost? Will this alone create a net profit or loss from 100% taxation? I would also like to highlight some additional points. As much as every town would like to wash its hands of everything impact-related, the reality is that the tax bill of each individual property has a direct impact on its impact-assessed value. Since the major factor of impact value in the north is the most recent sale price of comparable properties in the surrounding area, then the 35% special taxation rate of properties in Bernhardt-Morissette has been the driving force in the disparity that exists in the impact-assessed value between similar properties in these townships and those in town paying 100%. I actually believe that the current impact assessment in Bernhardt-Morissette are reasonable and reflective of their current value, assuming 35% taxation, and nobody likes, or everybody likes hearing that they have increased equity in their homes. The second, the tax bill goes to 100%, however, all of our properties immediately become severely overvalued because the resale value of those homes now plummets based on the obscene tax bill alone. This is what keeps the value of comparable homes in town so much lower and thus actually undervalued, since the market value of those homes is dramatically hindered by the high tax rate within the municipality. As an example, my tax bill now is the same as it was when I owned a house with similar square footage and features on Hillcrest Drive. What was the difference? The impact value of the house on Hillcrest was almost one-quarter of what my current house value is. Artificially skewed lower in value primarily because of the high tax rate than its features would have suggested. Even worse, I paid $800 per year in taxes for a three-bedroom house on Wood Street, and in 2012, the impact reassessment actually decreased to a total value of $25,000. I then sold that house for almost $170,000. That lies the problem that you're having with the tax revenue is the impact assessments. Three, considering my 2020 impact assessment, the general tax levy increases for this year proposed by Mr. Augustus and a change to 100% taxation of Bernhardt-Morissette, my taxes in 2020 would be over $10,000 per year. I did some research into other municipalities in the area and calculated the value of a home that one could own with that yearly tax levy. In North Bay, your home value would be $700,000. In Timmins, half a million dollars. In Cochrane, $600,000. And most disturbing, 50 minutes up the road, Timiskaming Shores would have a value of three-quarters of a million dollars to have that taxes, those taxes. Why are these numbers important? Because a change to 100% taxation would result in these effects. One, all current residents would lose much of the equity built up in their homes since their property resale values would instantly plummet far below their impact-assessed values. Most concerning is that there has been a lot of recent turnover in sales in Bernhardt-Morissette, which has driven up the assessed values, but these individuals would instantly lose massive sums of money in their investments if they had to sell again. In fact, this increase would make the real estate in Bernhardt-Morissette almost unsalable simply due to the high taxes, since other costs like heating are already so much higher than they are in town. Two, this selling of homes for a marked increase in return is a likely scenario because of the substantial financial burden this will place on homeowners in Bernhardt-Morissette. Multiple retirees on fixed incomes would have a difficult time making up the large increases. There could also be individuals who default on their mortgages, resulting in cheap bank sell-offs or people defaulting on their tax bills altogether. If this happens in high numbers, what is the town's plan? An increase of $6,000 per year isn't something that someone could be reasonably expected to plan for. Three, a large portion of new sales in Bernhardt-Morissette have been made by young people or young families with kids, which is precisely the type of people that the town has been either trying to attract or keep. Many of these people also make up a large portion of your professional Many of these people also make up a large portion of your professional base in town and offer so much more to the town than just their taxes. Why would they stick around when for the same tax bill and better services, they could own a home worth twice the value 50 minutes down the highway? Isn't the town trying to attract new professionals, let alone lose the ones we currently have? As a teacher, after many years of declining school population, we are finally starting to see numbers stabilize and actually make an upturn in the lower grades. This is the future of our town, and many of these families recently migrated to Bernhardt-Morissette. Are we willing to lose them to surrounding municipalities? Four, raising the taxes to 100% will cause a jump in tax revenue, but it is not sustainable long-term. In addition to the issues described, there could end up being a net loss to the town long-term. Impact assessments will be continually challenged based on reduced selling prices because of the higher taxes. Over the long-term, property values will skew lower to match those artificially created in town, meaning that after the original increase, tax revenues from Bernhardt-Morissette will decrease over time, even though new hard services will have to be maintained. This brings me to possible solutions. I don't believe that 100% taxation across a municipality is fair based on the realities of the access to infrastructure and services provided. I can see three other viable options for consideration. One, bring in an independent tax consultant expert to reinterpret the current tax situation of Bernhardt-Morissette and those of the other areas within the town that currently lack infrastructure and services. Two, independently choose to assign and adopt a special service area taxation rate for all areas within the town that lack infrastructure, like pipes and ground and services. But this would still result in debate over what that fair tax rate would be unless this also included bringing in an expert. And three, the status quo. This is the decision that would cause the least upheaval to the residents of Bernhardt-Morissette. But if this is the decision that is to be made, I think that a press release should be made as to the average taxes currently paid by year-long and seasonal residents of Bernhardt-Morissette to resolve some misconceptions currently held by many town residents and remove the wedge that has been created. Thank you for your time and listening to my presentation.
Okay, the last presenter of the evening is Justin Gocci. Okay. And perhaps, as we said earlier, there may be another opportunity for him to come in and present. Well, thank you all, all the presenters. You can certainly see a lot of work, a lot of good data went into all the presentations, and I want to thank you all for that. And, you know, as we said, tonight was just for us to listen as a group, and we certainly listened. And we'll...from there, we'll go on, and I don't know if any councillors want to make any comments tonight. It's...to thank any of the...Councillor Morgan?
Yeah, as my opening remark, and what I told several people that approached me directly, was that this is designed to provide lots of opportunity to give us feedback. Mr. Augustus had the public meeting to bounce ideas back and forth. Now, we're here tonight. Council is certainly listening. We're...you know, we...to be honest, I don't think there's anybody at the table here who is looking at 100% increase, but that's to be discussed at a later date. But over the next weeks, by all means, I think the opportunity is there to continue to engage your representatives to, you know, to make your point, so that when the time does come, maybe it's the end of February or March or whatever, that you feel comfortable that your points have gotten across. And certainly, myself, I'm available, and I think I speak for the rest of council as well. And so this is very...just want to be very upfront. This is a very transparent, very thoughtful, very accommodating process, and I think that at the end of the day, I think everybody will hopefully be satisfied with the outcome. So just please take advantage and make sure that your points get across.
Councillor Kylie?
Yeah, I just want to echo some of the comments that Mayor Tony and Councillor Todd Morgan said. I want to thank the people from Bernhardt-Morissette for coming out tonight and presenting themselves in a very professional and civil manner. You brought up a lot of good points, and as Councillor Morgan said, council's listening. Appreciate your efforts. It was...a lot of work went into this, and it was certainly worthwhile bringing all of council up to date on what's happening in Bernhardt-Morissette. So I thank you personally, and I think the rest of council feels the same way.
Item seven on the agenda is introduction reading and consideration of bylaws.
I have a motion that's moved by Councillor Morgan, seconded by Councillor Barker, that bylaw 18-005, being a bylaw to provide for interim tax levy and penalty and interest for 2018, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? It's carried.
It's moved by Councillor Barker, seconded by Councillor Morgan, that bylaw 18-006, being a bylaw to appoint clerk and deputy clerk by appointing Patrick Silvestro as deputy clerk, repealing bylaw 17-035, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? That's carried, and welcome aboard, Patrick.
It's moved by Councillor Barker, seconded by Councillor Morgan, that bylaw 18-007, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute a funding agreement with the Ministry of Transportation for the 2017-2018 Connecting Link Program, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? It's carried, thank you. Item eight is notices of motion. Item nine, the confirmation bylaw, please.
It's moved by Councillor Morgan, seconded by Councillor Barker, that bylaw 18-008, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held January 23, 2018, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Councillors' reports. Councillor Barker?
Yesterday, we had a police service board meeting at Town Hall, and our stats from the third and fourth quarter came in quite nice, with the rates being, I think, 89 or high 80s on resolved cases with everything going on. I'd like to commend our officers in town for the hard work and dedication due to the community, as well as getting involved in the community, volunteering in various capacities. Really do appreciate all you do for our community in uniform and while in pedestrian role. So thank you so much.
Yeah, and certainly as the Chair of the Police Commission, I certainly echo what Councillor Barker has said tonight. I have an announcement to make. The town of Kirkland Lake extends an invitation to everyone in the community for an open house Tuesday, January 30, from 6:00 p.m. till 8:00 p.m. here at Heritage North, and it's to join the staff for a community open house to learn more about the municipality of Kirkland Lake, departments within the town, and the staff that serve the community. So we certainly welcome everybody out if they can make it. Also, I want to say how pleased and such good news on the recent announcement by K.L. Gold. $320 million investment over five years in our community is huge. It's certainly huge to, going forward, to opportunity for our local residents to have employment, and it's certainly huge to the fact that the spending for this project will impact our economics tremendously over the next five years. I think something that...I've been here 68 years, and I think it's something that we haven't seen yet. And also, it adds, you know, just this project will add something like 17 years of life for a gold mine, which is really unheard of, and it shows, certainly shows that Kirkland Gold has a lot of confidence in the McCassan Mine and certainly the gold that lies beneath our streets. So tremendous news for Kirkland Lake and area.
I have a motion that's moved by Councillor Barker, seconded by Councillor Morgan, that council adjourn its regular meeting of January 23, 2018, to an in-camera meeting to discuss one personnel issue and one possible land sale issue.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned, and thank you all for coming out.